Commissioners will take their seat. It's nine thirty. It's the point of time to call the meeting to order. At this time, we do. We do have a quorum present. All five commissioners are here. At this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Capps to give our invocation with a stand as remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
This is right. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings you've given us. We thank you for letting us be here today and conduct the business of this county and speak with the commissioners and say, make decisions just hopefully there's a right toward you, dear Lord. Pray for the ones that's fighting overseas, protect them and their families. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here today. Appreciate your interest in county government and how the business of this county is conducted. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Sir.
All in favor say aye. There be all opposed, there be none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll hear comments from our public officials. I see we have Chief Deputy Anderson here on behalf of the sheriff. He says waving me off. He does not wish to speak this morning. So with that, so we'll move on to the next item is public comments from the citizens. At this time, I'm gonna call on Rick Clifton, President and CEO of the Covington County ECD and Business Development Center to make a presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I feel like I ought to be over there, sitting up there with y'all. We, uh, I just want to take a moment to thank y'all for, um, for what y'all have done for the Covington County Economic Development Commission. Uh, without your support, uh, we're not able to, to get out in the community to spread the word about Covington County. I've also, uh, wanna thank y'all for the time that I spent representing you because it made me appreciate just what a hard job y'all have. And, uh, I appreciate y'all's service. What we're trying to do at the Covington County Economic Development Commission is to promote the county. What we have found is that it is often difficult to promote our county because of, uh, if we don't do it, it don't get done. If we're not out there, nobody's coming to us. We've got to come to them. And that's why it's important for, for the support of the communities so that we can be out there to promote the county. I told, maybe told some of you this story. Uh, I went to the Commerce Department and asked them, uh, what can I do to help you help us? And they said, well, we, we've submitted, uh, your, uh, your spec buildings for five different projects. And I said, really? I said, I didn't know that. What that's telling me is that we didn't make the cut. We didn't, they didn't even come to see us because we didn't even know we were being considered for those five different projects. They were all automotive projects. So, we have got to go out and actively promote our county. Because if, if we don't tell our story, nobody's gonna tell our story. The state has come up with a slogan, a branding slogan. It's called Made in Alabama. And what we have done is come up with targeted industries. And aviation is one of the targeted industries and it is certainly a port, important part of our community. The facilities that we have at the airport, uh, I feel and I hope you feel are vital to the future of the county. It's a valuable asset that we've got to maintain. Automotive is another targeted industry. Say Hason has about a hundred and thirty folks working there. With the announcement of Kia, perhaps going to Montgomery, uh, their expansion, if they go to Montgomery, that's just gonna increase the capacity and perhaps bring some more automotive suppliers into, into our area. But I think what we've, we've gotten caught in is I've, as I've gotten into the job a little bit, is we've stressed aviation, we've stressed automotive, but we haven't looked probably at our biggest asset here and it's agricultural timber. That's our big asset here in Covington County. So, we're working very hard with the, with the state. Dr. Ken Muenfeld, who works with the Commerce Department, you know, has forgotten more about timber than, than, than I'll ever know. Uh, I'm trying to get him to come down here to see what we've got and maybe speak, uh, to, uh, the folks that are in the forestry industry. Because that to me, forestry and agriculture are too vital to our county not to try to promote and see what we can develop from what our assets are. Another area that we're looking at is food processing, uh, whether it be peanuts, you know, we grow a lot of peanuts here. Well, we send them all off. We don't do anything with them here. We, we grow a lot of products here, but we send them all off. We're, we're down at the bottom instead of taking advantage of the, of the higher tier in processing of, of our agricultural products. So, that's another thing we're looking at. This past year, Commerce Department asked us to supply them with a, a report on how many industrial jobs, uh, were created in the county last year. And, uh, and we, we discovered that, uh, just based on the ones that we knew, and I feel like we've probably missed some, uh, that there were a hundred and twenty-eight industrial jobs, uh, created last year in Covington County. And of those hundred and twenty-eight, we were actively involved in a, in a hundred and eighteen of them. So, uh, you know, it's kinda like your church. You wanna recruit new members to your church, but you also wanna keep your existing members in your church. So, you gotta minister to your own as you try to attract other folks. So, Jacob Morgan, who has joined our office, has been, uh, uh, going out and visiting existing industry and trying to see what they have, whether we can connect some of our existing industries together and what we might can bring in to help support them. And just let them know that we are here. If they do an expansion, to let us know because we might could help them. Hoodamaki is an example of that. Uh, and that, that was eighteen new jobs last year. And that came from an expansion that we worked with them to bring on a new piece of equipment. And that, and that equipment, you know, has added, uh, that and some other things have added eighteen new jobs over there. So, uh, we, we definitely trying to promote the county. We're trying to attract new business and we're trying to, to look at our existing industries as to what they need. And also what we're trying to do is to develop retail. And, uh, again, it's, it's tough. Y'all have a tough job, but attracting retail to, to a rural area is tough, you know? Some places won't even consider it, you know? I, I, I went to, to a show and went to see, uh, Steak and Shake, you know? I thought that'd be a, a good addition. And, uh, he told me that they were a two and a half million dollar investment and they only looked at cities of fifty thousand plus. Well, you know, our county's not fifty thousand plus, so, so I had a, had a shake there at his booth and said, thank you very much, and I left. But, uh, we've also reached out in the communities. Uh, Jacob went and spoke to the Florala City Council not too long ago. Uh, I went over to River Falls and spoke with them. We've also been in touch with the folks up at Red Level, trying to, uh, to work with them on developing some property they have over there by Dollar General. So, the best thing I think we can do and what we try to do is to be ready and be responsive. Two weeks ago, we, we got a request, what they call an RFP, a Request for Proposal. And we got in on Wednesday afternoon and they wanted a request for proposal by five o'clock Thursday. So, we spent all day Thursday working up our proposal, but luckily we had things in line so we could submit a good proposal. And this is a very legitimate prospect that we're still in the running for. So, uh, you've gotta be ready, you've gotta be responsive, and you've got to get the word out. I don't wanna bore you, but, uh, we make contacts with people in, in the, in the craziest places. We, uh, we were at a, uh, an aviation show and there's a reception at the beginning of the show. And I didn't wanna go. Uh, there's a thousand people there. I didn't wanna go. But I said, well, I'll go. So, I went to the reception, got my plate, sat down and started talking to the guy next, next to me. The guy next to me runs the company that hires aviation workers, uh, for Vector and, and was, also had a contract with DRS if, if they had gotten cranked up. So, I said, what's your main problem? He said, housing. He said, people don't have a place to stay, so they come temporarily. Mama can't come with them, so they're just here temporarily. When they find a better job that their family can go with them, they go there and they leave. It's turnover. So, I said, would you put that in writing? He said, sure. So, he's pu- put that in writing and we've used that to support, uh, the apartment complex that we've been trying to work on so long, uh, going down Debra Hill. So, you never know when you're gonna make contacts with people. The point being, if I, if I wasn't there, I wasn't able to go there, if I hadn't gone to the reception, if I hadn't sat, sat down next to that guy, none of that would have happened. And he's been a very good source because he knows what's happening in the aviation industry. He knows which people are hiring, which people are laying off. So, uh, it's the contacts that you make and it's your support that enables us to make those contacts. So, again, we're trying to get the word out. Uh, we appreciate what y'all do. We appreciate your support. And, uh, hopefully we'll be coming back soon with some, uh, some good information and, and some good announcements. I've always said, uh, you know, that, and a, an announcement's event. It's, it's an event, you know? It's a big event. But economic development is a process. You know, it took nine years to get Airbus. Uh, it wasn't that day when they cut the ribbon and stuck the gold shovel in the ground. It was nine years to get to that point. So, uh, so, so we're working. Uh, please believe that and we appreciate your support, which, which enables us to go out and, and tell people about the county. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you, Mr. Clifton?
Come back again, give us a pep talk again.
Do what?
Come back in a couple of months, give us another pep talk.
Well, hopefully come back a couple of months and have some good news, you know? That's what we want. We want, we want good news.
Glad you're coming back with us this morning.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you, Mr. Clifton.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other thing? Well, we appreciate that and we look forward to continued relationship with Economic Development Commission and to work for the betterment of the county. We also have with us this morning, Mr. Terry McClung, who's a representative of the LBW Community College Foundation.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come. Um, I'm the Vice President of the LBW Foundation Board this year and I'm also the Events President. And, um, this year we have a big event. It's our fiftieth anniversary of the community college. And so, we're doing a, a really big event to, um, bring all our alumni back and really show how LBW has helped our community in so many ways. So, I'm here to ask for support from the county because we really want the county and the city's help in this event. Um, it's April sixteenth. That is a fiftieth anniversary gala. It will be at the Kiwanis Building. And, um, it's to invite all of our alumni back and all of our, um, our community to come and celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the college. Uh, with that, it, it will be a fun event. Um, we'll have some representatives there from the college, past presidents, and of course alumni. We'll also have, um, food and dancing. Uh, we really just wanna make it a big event, but we really need the support. Um, the college, last year, the foundation board gave out eighty-five scholarships for a total of seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, with that, of course, we've gotta have the sponsorships and the money coming in to continue that. So, our goal this year is fifty thousand dollars. In the past, we usually raise around thirty thousand every year, so this year we've actually really increased that goal to match our fiftieth anniversary. And we're needing, um, additional support. So, we're here, I'm here, as representing the foundation board, to ask for the county's, um, help in this. We have, um, met with the city and they've agreed to help, so we really would like to have some county representation there as well. With the event, we will, um, recognize the public officials that are there for that night. Um, we're asking for at least a minimum of a thousand dollars so that we have at least two representatives there. Um, it comes with the four tickets 'cause I figured you'd wanna bring someone to, um, dance with or eat with. But, um, of course, the more we appreciate anything that the, um, commissioners can give. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I've got a question. Minister, what we've been doing, care you have it?
Do you know what we've?
What we've been donating the other year?
It's.
You don't have anything on?
I don't know anything about the past.
That's on, that's on the agenda further down to discuss if we wanna do anything. Just letting them make their presentation and no action at this time. Also, we have Mr. Tom Watson with the Sweet Home Alabama Campground, and if you come forward, uh, I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Sal to make a statement at this time.
Right. Um, Mr. Watson, as we spoke earlier, we're without, uh, representation right now for, from an attorney. Uh, we have to get that in place this afternoon. And as I told you before, this would be an opportunity for you to address the commissioners, but there's nothing that we can do at this moment to act on anything.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I'm here today discussing the issue in our lease agreement. There's a paragraph or clause in there that states that once we spend ten thousand dollars on our sewer and septic issues, that the county will reimburse us or do in-kind work either or a combination of. Uh, to date, we've, um, spent over thirteen thousand dollars and we've received no reimbursement. And although some in-kind work has been done, it hasn't, uh, we still got, you know, some things to do to, to rectify these issues. With the weather changing and spring and summer coming on, it's, it's a pretty pressing issue. So, I'm here today just to ask the commission to honor their agreement and help us get this issue solved. And I'd be hap- happy to meet with y'all again or answer any questions. And I know you can't really do anything right at the moment, but, um, just be aware that spring and summer's coming. And, uh, you know, in December, this wasn't such a big issue, but now that it's March and it's much more important.
I hate we don't have a, an attorney at, at the present time, but prior to this happening, I believe our attorney was in contact with your attorney and I think that's basically what, the track we've taken.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna try to do something, Mr. Tom. Get things worked out. Soon we'll get attorney. Try to get our things right now. We'll be getting back with you.
We're, we're fixing to go into the business session. And this is the first time that we have conducted business on behalf of the county without counsel. So, from my perspective, I have retained counsel for me personally at my own expense to advise me in the dealing with the county. I just do not want to run afoul of the law. So, with that, we'll move right on again. First item is cons- consider financing of sheriff's vehicles. Ms. Sal?
Okay, um, you skipped, skipping approval of minute, minutes.
We have none yet before.
Uh, we got on it all business first.
Oh, okay, okay, alright. Um, the sheriff's vehicles are the Tahoe's that was purchased in January. Uh, that's one that y'all had tabled the decision about making finance and arrangements for those. Uh, and so it's back on, on this agenda for y'all to decide if you want to go ahead and, um, finance those now. And I've got the rates in your packet included with the equipment. Page fourteen is where it starts.
Page what?
Page fourteen in your packet.
What in the previous budget that we had, uh, decided to vote it on and to talk about the finance, pay for one vehicle of the sheriff and, and finance the other three, is that?
That's what was previously arranged when the budget was adopted, was to finance two vehicles and pay for them.
If we have the, is it?
It's just at the point that we need to know if y'all need to, if y'all want to go ahead and finance those, we need to get that handled because, because they're already on the road.
For clarification, the, when the budget was adopted, the money was put in, in the budget to purchase it, but also we put in revenue alone to that amount. So, what is the? So, what we need to decide is who we're going to finance with.
If you're gonna finance and who you're wanting to go with.
Before we vote on what we're gonna do on the sheriff's vehicle? We need to do that?
We've already done that.
Yep, y'all already made the motions in previous, now we're just at the financing. We need to know if you wanna finance and if so, which.
It's, it's in the record that we're gonna fa- pay for one and finance three. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Two. Two.
Is that what you're saying already?
That's what it was in the budget for and y'all already approved the purchase.
I get caught up a little bit.
One and two, Mr. Was three purchases total?
In the budget, there was enough money to purchase three vehicles. And it was decided we would pay for one of them out of this year's money as if we would finance the other two in order to have the monies.
For current cash.
For purchasing. So, we're talking about, uh, financing two vehicles.
Well, if I may make a comment, in the past, we have financed through Bancorp and, uh, we had, uh, sought other sources of financing and, uh, had some good response from some of our local banks. Some of them are locally owned and some of them are chain banks, if you wanna call them that. And if I'm reading this correctly, we just need to turn, uh, Regions Bank came in with a, uh, an interest rate of one point two-six percent for three years on the, and one point seven-five for, uh, five years to finance those vehicles. I don't know what the payment schedule would be if we have that, what difference it would be between the financing of three and five years.
The main thing in consideration is the miles they put on these trucks after five years. Uh, so, I would recommend three years just because of the lifetime of the vehicle.
Well, I would make a motion that we finance with, uh, Regions Bank those vehicles on a three-year period. There being the lowest rate of any of the people that respond.
Any other comments?
That was the purpose of doing this and they are a local bank and.
Saving us money?
They be, they, they're, you know, they saving us, uh, over our, what we were using. You know, nearly six per, six percent, point, you know, point six percent, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Norther, does I take that as a second to his motion?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll second it.
You know, that was none concerned mine. We, we'd really need to explore all avenues when we consider financing so we can get the very best deal for the county. And I like to use county businesses to con- to finance county, uh, things. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments?
We didn't, we didn't miss anybody, fraud anybody, did we?
I, I contacted every bank in town, yes.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. Now, we'll move into the new business. We're considering approval of the minutes for February the eleventh, two thousand fifteen, regular meeting. And February the twenty-fifth, special meeting, uh, of two thousand and fifteen. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion we approve these minutes of the eleventh and the fif- twenty-fifth, cause those two meetings.
I have a, uh, motion and a second to approve the minutes for both meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider approval of payroll and accounts payable for February two thousand and fifteen. You have that information in your packet. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion we accept this payroll and accounts for February.
Sir.
I have a second by Mr. Barton. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. At this time, we would consider a proclamation for child and adult care food program, which is March the sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen. Do have someone, would, would you like to address the commission, please? Come up here and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Latoya Jones and, um, I work for Human Resource Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit community action agency. And I'm a manager for the Child and Adult Care Food Program. And basically, what we do is we go out to licensed home daycare providers. We make three unannounced visits and we make sure that they're feeding the kids the nutritious meals like they're supposed to and we reimburse them. And, um, this week, this March is, um, nutrition month, but this week is specially, um, designated for a child and adult care food program. And I also have with me, um, our administrative assistant, um, and monitor, Angela Jones, is with me as well.
We thank you for being here. It was something, this is a program I didn't know we had.
We actually have nine home providers here in, um, Covington County.
Y'all, y'all providing a service where there's a need.
Yes, yes.
And you just want this proclamation so the public will be aware that you are here working in Covington County.
Right. And right now, it's just the daycare homes, but we are extending our services out to the, um, daycare centers very soon.
That sounds great. Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate what y'all doing.
Can I have a motion on this action here that we, uh, do this proclamation?
I make a motion, Chairman, we do this proclamation.
We have a second. Have motion and second. Any comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. We have the proclamation here, uh, to go out and, uh, we'll give you this copy and is that right, Ms. Sal? This time, we'll take up the donation to LBW Community College Foundation. If we do what they have requested, it will have to come out, if I'm not, am I, think I'm correct on that, it would have to come out of the contingency fund.
That's right.
That's correct.
So, and in that balance right now, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's around six, seven thousand dollars.
I believe that's correct.
So, y'all have heard the presentation by Mr. McClung. What is yours as a pleasure?
I make a motion, Chairman, we give a thousand dollars to L L D.
I'll sit.
I have a motion by Mr. Elmore and a second by Mr. Norther that we provide a thousand dollars to the Community College Foundation for this fiftieth year's celebration of the college and so with that, is there any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none, motion, uh, carried unanimously. I would, I would just like to say this. My children have taken advantage of, of the college and it has been a, a very helpful thing for our kids in our county to attain an education and move on. And what we hope for, Ms. McClung, is that when they finish, they come back here and work in Covington County.
Not only Covington County, it's surrounding counties.
Hope we have the jobs.
The next item is, um, consider proclamation for Covington County's Don't Stop It on Alabama's Spring Plena. And we had the grand dame of the Pals program here, Ms. Janice Cassiberry. So, I will ask her to come forward at this time.
Never heard you refer to that woman, Janice.
I was slave. Used to be more so than I am now, but I've got to do it now. Come on. You have now become a slave to litter.
Well, will, will you introduce your support? Well, will you introduce your support group?
I will, I think all of you might know, Miss Chrissy Duffy, she is our new executive secretary of the Chamber of Commerce. And then this is our new four H club leader, Catherine.
Esses.
Esses, okay, she is very new. And I've met with her and the four H club is interested in helping us with this project. And all of you know me, I know everyone knows me, cause I am the trash lady. I was named that about several years ago and I can't ride down the road and see trash and not stop and pick it up. I'm to the point in life, which all of you will be there sooner or later. And I can't do that now. I, I have a back problem. But anyway, we're still fighting litter since nineteen ninety, when we got this program started. And the Chamber of Commerce Environmental Committee, which I was, am chairman of, and Alabama pals have combined in this effort. Alabama pals sends us all information, trash bags and all that. And so I just plead with each of these commissioners. I think the last time I came, I gave each of them a piece of pie. Some of you were not here, some of you were here. And we consider the county as one big pie. And when you cut four slices out, you know which is your slice. One, two, three, four. And if you take time and effort to go to your churches, go to your schools along with us, we can get this county cleaned up. The city has been addressed to do the same thing within their councilman, they have five, they have a pie too. And y'all just don't know how passionate I am with the litter situation. Right now, we have a lot of people coming through here on the way to the beaches and all that, because it's spring break time. And when they enter Covington County, and I hope all of you have seen our signs, nine of them, around when it says, welcome to Covington County. And when they see, they enter our county and then they see litter along the roads, that's, that's a, a flag. But if they see a clean county, it might be that they would like to come back here and maybe do a business or set up uh something, come here, live here, I mean, this is a wonderful place to live. I've lived here all my life and I want it to stay as clean as possible.
You wanna say something?
I just wanna say, in order for Mr. Clifton to be able to do his job and uh Mr. Watson over there to invite people to his uh park, the, the county needs to be clean, um, you know, it makes a huge impact on businesses that are coming to um, you know, prospective businesses that are, that are coming here and then of course, community pride as well, so. I think if we all try to encourage people to go into their, you know, groups into orgu- organization schools, as she's saying, you know, spread the word and um, and even ourselves, you know, it'll help a lot.
Okay. Um, just, you know, our youth are the future and so if we can instill in them the love of Covington County and have them to keep it clean, um, then everything can be really to, to, to do this, so.
It's a wonderful project for young people to get involved. To me, education is the key. And if we e- educate our young people and children, you don't drop it on Covington County, then they can educate their parents, cause there's where a lot of the problem is, the parents. And then the children, they, my mama and my daddy throws it out, then I can do it too, but that's not the way it is. I thank y'all for letting us come today and uh I don't know, uh, Jan White is my co-chairman. And she has worked hard with this during the time that I was not able to be as active as I hope I can be for another few years. But she had to go to Dothan today, her mother's having heart catheterization. So she, she is really working with this also.
And I feel sure um Michelle over there will come and take a picture, we get a, a group, you know, that um is gonna pick up some trash, I even brought a box of the trash bags here too, if anybody comes here wanting to.
Y'all come and join us up here and let us.
Well, don't you want us to take action first?
No, you can.
That's how I wanted you.
You can, you can do this, do that, the picture making later, but we do invite you to do that.
Yes, ma'am, we follow your direction.
I like to say, recommend that uh command Ms. Cassiberry what she done, I've been on the commissioner's board going on eleven years and she was one of the first to come here with our organizations. And her beyond aid, I, I commend her for what she doing and still doing it and still working hard with it, I think it's that's certainly good as sound for us young folks, and I wanna thank you personally, Ms. Cassiberry.
Thank you.
I wanna find out about the pie she was talking about.
Well, me and Carl got the pie.
Y'all got that, okay.
I tell you what.
We didn't do the work.
If y'all uh do what I'm asking to do, I'll bake you a pie.
That sound like, that sound like a bribe, do we?
We thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassiberry.
We do hear your word a lot, you know, through other organizations, if you're going out and visiting, so everybody's listening, so we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to just say this, that this program serves, I think, two purposes, since we have the four H club involved in it. It's a whole lot easier to, to train a child than to get us old dogs to change our ways. And so, you know, they can set the example for us. So do I have a motion that we uh do this proclamation?
I assume we, Chairman, can do the proclamation.
Second.
Mr. Termin, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, there being none motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll step down and get the picture for, for the.
Photo, photo, I'll.
You know, I wanna, I wanna say something here. Me and Ken's the only one got green on in this. That's sure you can know what's going on.
We need to overlook, we can get it, don't we? He's down like this, I think he's got green too. Y'all might go get in there too.
Y'all come around, y'all.
If you, you the trash lady, you.
Y'all can, we can get it, come around here.
Ms. Janice, you get right there in the middle. Now let's have a pretty girl at each end.
Right, right.
Yeah, we got a dress, you commissioners up a little bit.
We need all the help we need.
You said that. Alright, we're going on three, one, two, three. And a hand, one, two, three.
Alright, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Like y'all.
They count that to me, well, I heard they get the.
It was good too.
By the time I say one, he's been shooting, but do it again.
All the commissioners will need to sign this, uh, Ms. Salwell will take care of that. Our next item on business is our annual levy for alcohol licensing. Uh, what you have in your packet, uh, Ms. Salwell, I believe what is presented here is the, for the same rate that we have used in the past.
That's correct, it's just an annual um license that has to be sent into Montgomery stating that we are, our fees and we are staying at the same level. Uh, that's the maximum county fee that, that has been done in the past.
Is there any question, do I have a motion that we levy these?
I saw money.
All opposed, uh, second, do we have a second?
Uh, second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, there being none motion carried unanimously. The next item is cons- consider financing of tru- purchase for the engineering department, uh, Ms. Salwell.
Yes, um, it's back to page fourteen in your packets again, and it goes through page thirty-five. Basically, I've got the quotes from each of the local lenders that we contacted and the rates are there for you to choose, um. We currently purchasing four new trucks. And if you want to finance three or four, it's up to y'all, about the decision y'all decide to make as far as what lender to go with.
I, I believe that when we take the purchase price and pay off of the existing loans and we take the m- proceeds from the sale, that what's left, if you make that difference, the traction is about the cost of three trucks.
We could do that, yes. And once again, it's the same schedule, which y'all were looking at before with your interest rates, um, there's a section for the Mack trucks.
What's the, what's the um, the amount we're gonna be financing on roughly, do you know, just?
Yes, um.
Three eighty-six or something like that.
What uh, what do you have on that day?
Uh, the new, new trucks, one hundred thirty-eight thousand eight oh six.
We have a net off of our equipment.
Well, the, the, the yellow equipment sold and we got enough to pay the two backos cash and have a pretty much knock that out even, pretty much.
Okay.
But the new trucks, uh, I see it's gonna be roughly, well, you don't know exactly what the trucks gonna bring, cause they did bring real high in March, so that's good, but I don't see having maybe fifty-three thousand to the good. But I don't know, maybe.
Well, we had the finance, the payments that were already scheduled for the rest of this year, um, taking off the amount, the payoff on our drunk trucks that we already have and then what was in the budget already to pay for. The um paper that was purchased, that was already, you had the budget for that.
Do, when's that leaving due, July?
July was the, let's see. June for the Mack trucks and August was the.
Yeah, we won't, we haven't received these trucks that I'll be speaking right now, is that correct?
No, it's gonna be two more months.
Two more months, so we, we, we don't need to find that, touch none of that till we see what o- o- other truck's gonna be sold in June, correct?
We can wait.
And you're.
That's an option you have also.
Okay, uh, just wait and see how those trucks sell before we uh do anything about financing, that's what I recommend.
Could I have a motion that we table this?
I saw move, Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion, second, that we table this, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion carried unanimously. Next item is executive session, in order to go into executive session, we have to make certain re- requirements. I'm going to ask Ms. Salwell at this time to read those requirements to us according to the open meeting.
Okay, um, in order to convene in an executive session, um, you must first um have a majority of the members, adopt by reported vote a motion calling for the executive session, setting out the purpose of the executive session. And then a um oral vote has to be given by each of the members of the commission. And it also needs to include the items to be discussed and the time limit that we will be in executive session.
So would you read the two uh, two exception that we're going into exec- that if we go into executive session that we, we will be considering?
Okay, the two items would be um discussing the uh general rep- reputation or character of um employees, which county attorney is what we were discussing on that. And then to discuss um the purchase, sale, exchange, lease or market value of real property.
Okay. So, so what we'll need a motion is a motion that we go into executive session to discuss these two items. And for us to return in twenty minutes.
Alright, yeah. I make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss the contract, the county attorneys and uh purchase of office space and be back in twenty minutes.
Executive session will consist of the members of the commission and our county administrator. And we will hope to be back in here at twenty-five minutes to ele- uh eleven.